Good morning. We actually have a quorum in the chamber, so whenever you're all ready, we can begin the meeting. Maybe we can clear this crowd out a little bit over here and over here. All right. Are we more or less ready here? No, we still have huge numbers of people walking around the chamber. All right. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, March 15th. I'm Councilmember Ruth Galanter. President pro tem, Mr. Ferraro will not be here today. Madam Clerk, please. We are being viewed on cable television on Channel 35. We're also available by council phone, and if there's anything else, it will have to wait. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernsen, Jake, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Duryea, Ridley, Thomas, Savornich, Wex, Walters, Ferraro, 12 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. We do have several presentations this morning, but we're going to begin as soon as we do the administrative details. So let's do the details first.
Approval of the minutes?
Without objection, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Again, without objection, that will be the order. And if we are then ready, Mr. Savornich, can I impose on you here for a second?
The chair recognizes Council President pro tem Ruth Galanter for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my very great honor this morning to present a delegation from Hungary who are visiting us this morning. They've been brought into council by Mr. Andrew Friedman, whom many of you have met through his work on the Charter Commission and who happens to be a neighbor of Mr. Ferraro, our council president. Our guest of honor this morning, I'm going to have to ask help in pronouncing this properly, is Dr. Andres Vahely-- Vahely-- there we go, Vahely, who is a member of parliament in Hungary. He's a-- we should all be as talented as he is. He speaks German, Latin, Russian, French, and Italian. Well, he doesn't speak Latin. He knows Latin. Russian, French, and Italian. He was born in-- oh dear, my Hungarian is not very good-- in 1953 in the county of Hévez-Megy?
Yes.
Close. I'm not even going to attempt the city. In-- later on, he studied law and earned a doctor's degree in 1978, and he practiced law in the field of administration and corporate law. But in 1982, he became the legal teacher's assistant-- a legal teacher's assistant. In 1986, he acquired another degree and became the first assistant to a university professor. He's written close to 1,000 articles and publications and numerous educational and political studies and has published eight books. He's now a member of the Hungarian Parliament and is deputy head of several assembly committees such as cultural and press tourism and the Hungarian Horse Breeding and Horse Sports Association. And I will share with you all his business card, which has a lovely picture of some of the horses on the back. They did not bring the horses on the delegation, however. He's also president of the Executive Committee that is preparing for the Second World Equestrian Meeting in Hungary that will take place this year and has a particular interest-- and you will see one of the reasons that I am introducing him in the absence of Mr. Ferraro-- in environmental matters. As many of you know, Eastern Europe has suffered for many decades from very serious air and water pollution that is the result of many years of industrial development and not so many years of attention to keeping the environment clean. And Dr. Vahely is one of the people whose job it is to try to fix that situation. So it's my very great honor to welcome you, and I will ask you, Mr. Friedman, perhaps you'd like to introduce Dr. Horvath, and then I want to make a presentation on behalf of the city. First, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Councilmember and President pro tem. Would like to introduce to you Dr. Martha Facszy Horvath, the Council General of the Republic of Hungary. And after your presentation, our guest also has a presentation to you from the Republic of Hungary.
Thank you. Well, let me start by fixing the microphone. First, we have for you a certificate of welcome from the City of Los Angeles on the occasion of your visit to the city. This is extended to you from the City Council with our warmest, best wishes and hopes that you will visit us again soon. And with that, we have from the mayor and the City Council, a gift, which I have seen, but you have not seen, so we have this for you as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the warm welcome, and I consider the invitation a great honor.
I am bringing you the 1,000th year Hungarian citizens greetings to each and every one of you members of City Council.
Hungary will be celebrating in the year 2000 its 1,000th year anniversary.
This is an important date, and it is equivalent with a certain date.
Today, March 15th, every Hungarian is wearing this ribbon which you see I am wearing here today.
We are celebrating the 1848 and 1849 revolution for freedom in Hungary.
That freedom revolution prevailed over a strong opposition.
The Hungarians were able to show the world that the Hungarians are people that want and desire real freedom.
In 1956, the Hungarian people again took arms for freedom.
My father was, in the 1956 Hungarian revolution, a major-- major of the guard.
I learned from my father why it is so very important that an individual should live in freedom.
Unfortunately, my father is no longer alive.
The Hungarian revolution was crushed by the Soviet communists in Hungary.
But today Hungary is a free, independent republic.
As a result of the crushing of the Hungarian revolution, many, many people fled the individuals that crushed the revolution.
There are over 200,000 Hungarian individuals living within California, and there are over 10,000 individuals living in your beautiful city of Los Angeles.
They're home, and we're home.
Please like the Hungarians that live over here, just as the Hungarians love their newly adopted country of the United States.
Please like our beautiful country of Hungary, and which will have a beautiful future.
Mrs. President, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the warm welcome, and I consider the invitation a great honor.
I am bringing you the 1,000th year Hungarian citizens greetings to each and every one of you members of City Council.
Hungary will be celebrating in the year 2000 its 1,000th year anniversary.
This is an important date, and it is equivalent with a certain date.
Today, March 15th, every Hungarian is wearing this ribbon which you see I am wearing here today.
We are celebrating the 1848 and 1849 revolution for freedom in Hungary.
That freedom revolution was prevailed over a strong opposition.
The Hungarians were able to show the world that the Hungarians are people that want and desire real freedom.
In 1956, the Hungarian people again took arms for freedom.
My father was, in the 1956 Hungarian revolution, a major-- major of the guard.
I learned from my father why it is so very important that an individual should live in freedom.
Unfortunately, my father is no longer alive.
The Hungarian revolution was crushed by the Soviet communists in Hungary.
But today Hungary is a free, independent republic.
As a result of the crushing of the Hungarian revolution, many, many people fled the individuals that crushed the revolution.
There are over 200,000 Hungarian individuals living within California, and there are over 10,000 individuals living in your beautiful city of Los Angeles.
They're home, and we're home.
Please like the Hungarians that live over here, just as the Hungarians love their newly adopted country of the United States.
Please like this little European Hungary, which is beautiful, bright, silent, and true future.
Mrs. President, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attention. I believe in trust in God. I hope in Jesus. God bless you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Before you leave, I see that you are wearing a pin with the flags of Hungary and the United States, and I would like you to have also one with the symbol of the city of Los Angeles. This is our local flower, the bird of paradise. And actually, I brought one for you as well.
I want to present to you this silver medallion from the Hungarian Parliament--
--and the coat of arm from the Republic of Hungary. I would like to present to you, Madam President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for having our distinguished guests with us here in the council chambers this morning. The next presentation we have, the chair would recognize Councilwoman Fewer for a presentation. Were you next, Ms. Goldberg? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg for a presentation.
Hi. Is the commission here, Commission on Women, Status of Women, are they here? This may be moot. Los Angeles County-- City Commission on the Status of Women, are they here in the room? Well, see?
Shall we call on Mr. Fewer, Ms. Goldberg? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fewer for a presentation.
Hi. Is the commission here, Commission on Women, Status of Women, are they here? This may be moot. Los Angeles County-- City Commission on the Status of Women, are they here in the room? Well, see?
Shall we call on Mr. Fewer, Ms. Goldberg? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fewer for a presentation.
Thank you much, Mr. President. Could our team from the Shanghai Municipal Trade Council come forward, please? Please. Mr. President, colleagues, it's my pleasure to have the honor of welcoming this team from Shanghai here. In August of 1999, a reciprocal agreement was signed between the United Teachers of Los Angeles, UTLA, and the Shanghai Municipal Trade Union Council. The purpose of the agreement is to promote understanding and develop friendly relations between the two unions. The Shanghai Municipal Trade Union Council hosted a UTLA delegation at the official signing ceremony, and now it is UTLA who is reciprocating, and all of us in Los Angeles join in welcoming the five delegates from Shanghai who are here. They include Chang Chen Sing, Jie Yu, Chen Ah Gai, Wang Qing Hua, and Chang Wu Feng. We are delighted to have them here along with Mr. Ling Yu, who is the translator, and I appreciate all of you being here. All of us in Los Angeles recognize the incredible importance of education in advancing the development of our city and indeed advancing worldwide development. Thank you very much for your hard work. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Fewer. Thank you, Mr. Fuhrer.
Mr. President, members of the council, we have a great opportunity once again to welcome one of the nation's premier citizens and advocates in the person of the Reverend Leon H. Sullivan, founder and chairman of Opportunities Industrial Centers of America. Dr. Sullivan, we're going to ask if you would just simply come forward at this point in time so that we can make our presentation to you. I have the honor and the privilege of introducing to you an individual whose mission in life is to help others help themselves. He has accomplished this on a grand scale, both nationally and internationally. The name of Leon Sullivan is a name familiar to many of us who have been involved in movements for social change and individual improvement. Having founded Opportunities Industrialization Centers of America, an organization which boasts of having created over 1 million jobs for young people in 130 cities and in eight countries. Reverend Sullivan's work is based on the philosophy that people can help themselves overcome poverty and oppression with the right kind of support and opportunities. While serving as pastor of Zion Baptist Church in Philadelphia, where he served for nearly 40 years, Pastor Sullivan directed his attention to the injustices of South Africa's apartheid system. You will recall in 1977, he initiated what is now known as the famous Sullivan Principles, a code of conduct for companies operating in South Africa. The Sullivan Principles have been recognized as one of the most effective tools to end discrimination in the South African workplace. During this same period of time, Dr. Sullivan was elected as a director of General Motors Corporation, where he served for 20 years, and where he continues to serve as a member of the advisory board. Today, Madam President and members of the council, Dr. Sullivan is setting new goals for the new millennium. The original Sullivan Principles are now the global Sullivan Principles. These are objectives followed by multinational corporations which support economic, social, and political justice. By adopting these principles, a company can help to improve the quality of life in the country in which it is located. These guidelines are comprehensive, they square with the fundamental questions of economic justice and social progress. In addition, Dr. Sullivan is working on the issue of literacy. By establishing the International Foundation for Education and Self-Help Programs, he is dedicated to teaching 1 million people to read and write during the current decade. Madam President, members of the councils, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, please join me in welcoming the Reverend Dr. Leon Sullivan and acknowledging his contribution to protecting and strengthening human rights and dignity in this country and around the globe.
To the honorable counsel, my great friend, my councilman of the OIC LA, ladies and gentlemen, I do appreciate this opportunity to speak to you if but for a few minutes in light of the limitation on your time. I am not a government official. I'm a black Baptist preacher from West Virginia, who's striving his best he can to do the work of God. As some of you know, I worked with Dr. Martin Luther King during the Civil Rights Days and organized the economic programs that opened thousands and tens of thousands of jobs to young blacks, Hispanics, women, and other minorities. I then went on the board of General Motors, as has been mentioned, where I confronted apartheid in South Africa. And I went to South Africa to see what the problems were, returned, and wrote the Sullivan Principles that became the guidelines and the standards for human rights and social justice in South Africa and played a major role towards the ending of apartheid. After that period, African leaders asked me, along with poor and needy peoples of Latin America and Asia and other parts of the world, even in the United States, to expand those principles to global Sullivan Principles, to apply to all companies having operations in cities or states or governments around the world. And I welcome this opportunity to come to you because this is the first time I've met with a city council of any city in the United States. And I came here because it was your council that was the first council in America that introduced and supported the global Sullivan Principles in South Africa. And it was this council who provided the leadership for that movement that helped towards the end of apartheid. I see some of my friends here who I know who were a part of that movement a number of years ago. So I come to you with a new appeal now. On November the 2nd, at the United Nations, Kofi Annan and I announced global Sullivan Principles for companies doing business anywhere in the world, so there'll be the rights for workers, for associations, so they can organize their unions, so that women can be upscaled in the workplace rather than kept down because of their gender, so the minorities, blacks, collets, wherever they are in the world, will have a chance to move along and ahead on the path of equality and opportunity. And these principles call for the end of child abuse, sweatshops, wherever they're found in the world, and to help these companies with what is needed in these communities like schools, like clinics, like hospitals, and like with helping with the eradication of the spread of HIV/AIDS, especially in Africa and other parts of the world. These principles apply not only to Africa and Asia, China, Beijing, and Bogota, but also to California, to your own communities, where still women are being kept down, where children are being taken advantage of, where companies are making enormous profits and not putting back to help the communities where they do business. So I've come to you on my first stop across the nation to ask councils like yours to support the global Sullivan Principles and to ask companies that do business in your jurisdiction to adopt and to follow these principles in California and in Los Angeles, and so that companies that do business with you, whether they be from Japan, or China, or Moscow, wherever they're from, will know they've got to abide by these principles in order to do business in Los Angeles. Give that a hand. I have just been informed that the Senate of the United States, within the next few weeks, will vote on a resolution supporting the global Sullivan Principles for all the companies operating in the United States and operating in the rest of the world. But I come to you first, even before this resolution is made in the Senate of the United States, to appeal to you here in Los Angeles to take the lead, so that I can then go to Philadelphia, my hometown, and to Detroit, and to Atlanta, and to Seattle, and to Boston, to appeal to all those councils to do what you did here in Los Angeles. And so I ask you to take the lead and to take these principles and to require that companies operating in Los Angeles or your jurisdiction will uphold these principles, follow them, report back to you each year on what they're doing, so that we can move these companies to stop just making all the money and do something to help the people. Thank you very much. And I appeal to you to do that. Will you help me? Will you help me? Will you help me? Let this be the first council in America that will have done this, and I'll leave these principles with you. Young lady, help me with this thing. All you ladies, help me with this thing. Help me with this thing, so when I can go to Washington, I can say, Allah says already done it, I don't have enough of getting copies. Help me with this thing. And you will be the first in the world, in a city, to take this kind of action. God bless the old black preacher from West Virginia.
The Reverend Leon Sullivan. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. You can expect that a resolution will be entered when we are next convened. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge Bishop Leon Ralph, who is the president and CEO of the Los Angeles Opportunities Industrialization Center, the Reverend William Campbell, who is the local head of CLU, Clergy and Laity for Economic Justice, and finally, Wally Fassler. Many of us know Wally Fassler for his work in the corporate community, Doing the Right Thing, who's a board member of OIC. And Wally, when you spend time, stand up, Wally, spend time in bishop and reverend. Wally, when you spend time with Pastor Campbell and Bishop Ralph and Dr. Sullivan, we expect that you will have oratory skills similar to theirs. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
The OIC in Los Angeles is becoming one of the finest training programs in America. Also, CalPERS has already endorsed this, but you get in front of them. Thank you very much.
The city council in Los Angeles is always in front of them. Don't worry about us. Thank you. You can't see me, I'm behind the post. Yeah, you do, actually, I'm a good friend of your niece Joan Countryman. That's it, you got it. We'll take care of it. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. All right, the chair recognizes Ms. Goldberg. And Jackie, am I correct that we're going to discuss item 62 more or less as a piece of this?
First 82, then 62.
First 82, 82. How do we get to 82? 82 and then 62. Go ahead.
I think that would be appropriate. Thank you. Do we have any other representatives here from the commission? Thank you very much. Today, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, chairperson Galanter, item 82 today is a resolution to adopt and implement the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. It's being brought forward to us by the Los Angeles Commission on the Status of Women, the Friends of the Commission, and many others. And I just wanted to call forth the Commission President and the Executive Director to present them a resolution thanking them for bringing forth what is known as SEDAW, which basically obligates countries that have ratified it to take all appropriate measures to ensure the full development and advancement of women in all spheres, including political, educational, employment, healthcare, economic, social, legal, marriage, and family relations, as well as to modify the social and cultural patterns of conduct of men and women to eliminate prejudice, customs, and all other practices based on the idea of the inferiority or superiority of either gender. The United States signed SEDAW in 1980 but has not ratified it. We are amongst a handful of nations, including Iraq and Iran, who have not actually become signers of this. And so I would first like to present this to our commission members and thank them for bringing this to the attention of this council. And then, if it's in order, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution.
Well, we do actually have someone else who wishes to speak in support of the resolution, so we're going to have to open the public hearing long enough to let him do that as well.
All right, fine.
So why don't you finish? All right, do that, then let me just call Mr. Mario Topfer from Amnesty International up to the podium, and then we can have a motion, get this done.
Thank you very much. Hi, and thank you very much to the council for having me here today. My name is Mario Topfer, and I'm here on behalf of Amnesty International. Our organization fully endorses the principle of SEDAW and is pleased that the city of Los Angeles is reaffirming its commitment to women and girls by passing the resolution today, hopefully. We applaud Councilmember Jackie Goldberg for her support of the principles of SEDAW, and we thank the Commission of the Status of Women and the city attorney for their efforts in pulling together human rights and women's organizations to help develop a blueprint for future public policy. Amnesty International and other advocates for the protection of the human rights of women are seeking local implementation of the principles enshrined in SEDAW for the very simple purpose of bringing the issue of gender into the decision-making process. It can no longer be seen as an accident that women are referred to as a minority despite the fact they are at least half of the population of this and every other country in the world. Women's issues and concerns need to be integrated into all levels of decision-making and all levels of government. Local implementation is a first step that can bring real change to the rights of women in Los Angeles and can begin the momentum to have the United States join the over 165 other countries who have ratified this convention. I thank you very much for the time I've had here today and certainly hope you will pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the official public hearing. Do you want to?
Now I'd like to move that we adopt the item that's known as the resolution that's item 82.
All right, and let me just say before we do that, that I remain intensely jealous that you got that resolution in before I did. But I also want to just note, I believe the problem with the United States ratification has been that certain senators have bottled this up, notably Mr. Helms. And that there is now, I'm told, there is now a movement throughout the United States to simply go around him, and so our ratification, our support, along with that of many other cities across the country ought to send them a message, one hopes. All right, does anybody else wish to speak? If not, open the roll on item 82, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We have a unanimous approval, we'll do that forthwith.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to all of you. And you have another presentation, do you not?
Well, actually, it's just, we were, we passed a while back the opportunity for the theology of work relative to let justice roll down American workers at the New Millennium. We passed that we would invite them to come on the 15th to speak, and so they are here, and I would just like to ask if we can take that item.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, let's go through the agenda quickly and dispense with anything that's going to be continued or sent to committee, and then we'll know where we are. Don't leave yet. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number five, there is a request to continue to March 17th.
If there is no objection, that item will be continued as suggested.
Item number 18, Councilmember Brunson requests that be continued to Tuesday, March 21st.
You have a problem with that? Go ahead.
Wait, wait, your mic's not on. Can you get Ms. McCowen's mic back?
We've had a request for Mr. Sutton to make that Wednesday instead, a week from today.
Okay, the only question I'll leave, we have a number of people who came down to speak on it today, this is only one item issue on the whole planning department, I don't know if they would like to speak today or come back on Wednesday. If we could hold the hearing today, then we wouldn't on Wednesday, I don't know if there's any reaction. Okay, I think they said to come back. Okay, I think they said to come back, so we'll continue.
All right, and it's already had.
So that'll be Wednesday then, right? Because Mr. Sutton had asked for Wednesday. Thank you.
Twenty-second. Okay, so that item is, number 18 is continued till March 22nd. Okay, what else?
Item number 23, request to continue Friday, March 17th.
Any objections to that? In that case, that'll be the order.
Item number 25, also request to continue to Friday, March 17th.
If anybody has objections, you're going to have to move fast. Okay, that's continued until Friday.
Item numbers 36 and 41, request to receive and file. They're both REPS, and the REAP violations have been corrected.
Corrected. All right. Without objection, that'll be the order on, those two items will be received and filed.
And item number 42, request to continue to April 5th.
Any problem with that? All right, that's continued till April 5th.
And number 47, also received and filed. The violations have been corrected.
Splendid. We always like to hear they've been corrected. Without objection, that will be received and filed. Okay. And everything else, we need hearings on, right?
Not necessarily. Do you want to go through? Items one and two are both required public hearing items.
All right, so let's hold those for the moment.
Okay. Item number two, actually, you can continue the hearing and the ordinance to April 5th.
All right, we'll continue item two to April 5th, which is three weeks.
Items three through 25, public hearings have been held on those.
All right, we have cards on three, four, 18. 18 was continued, and 25 was continued. Okay. So we'll call three and four special. I can't hear you. I'm sorry, we're, thank you. We're calling items three and four special because we have speakers on both of those. And are there any specials? Do council members have any specials? Items, say again.
Three through 25. Excuse me, with the exception of 18 and 25, so three through 24.
Three through 24. Any specials?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, Ms. Zikowski calls special. Anybody else? Twenty, Ms. Zikowski. Five, four, three, two, one. Open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Can we do fourth with on 15 and 17?
Let's do fourth with on 15 and 17. Okay, so 16 and 20 were called special. All right, what else?
Madam President, item number 26 is confirmation of a city official. It's Terry Ogawa to the, a permanent appointment to the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families, their executive director.
All right, let's, I hear a motion. Let's take that up. Sit down long enough for us to get this over with. Anybody wish to be heard? Ms. Goldberg moves. Mr. Padilla seconds. Open the roll, close the roll.
Thirteen ayes.
Tabulate the vote. Thank you, that is approved. Fourth with on that too, please. Now where are we? Now we're back to...
Well, item number 27 is an acceptance of bids. The bids were opened this morning in the CAO's office, and the CAO has prepared a resolution for council to adopt, awarding the bid to Fidelity Capital Markets, and for an aggregate principal amount of $14,285,000, with a true interest cost of 5.25%.
Did you wish it? At your peril, Mr. Subornich. All right, do I hear a motion? Mr. Subornich moves. Ms. Zikowski seconds. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. That's another fourth with, is it not? Okay.
Items 28 through 83, public hearings have not been held.
All right, now let's go back to, let Ms. Goldberg do her presentation and...
They're in the back right now, so we...
All right, let's begin, begin at the beginning. Next item.
Item, do you want to do the remainder of 28 through 83?
Sure, why not?
You have cards on 62 and 82.
I had cards on 26.
And 26 also.
Yeah, 26. Yeah, I know, but we skipped Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Greenwood, did you... General comments. All right, well, we're going to let the... Did you want to be heard on item 26? Sorry about that, I just was, there's too many pieces of paper here.
Okay, Madam Chair. Yeah, my name is Wesley Greenwood, and I was really going to speak on Terry Ogawa's confirmation, but I really wanted to say something first about the commission itself. The commission, under the interim director, Robert Sines, and the two other directors, Olivia Mitchell and Anne Bressard, did an absolutely outstanding job in filling in for Sally Thompson when she left the commission. So we are very pleased that the commission saw fit this morning to unanimously confirm the appointment of Terry Ogawa to that position, and we want you to know that the Children, Youth, and Their Families Commission is in very good hands, and we compliment you on what you have done this morning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. That closes the public hearing, and I apologize again for having missed you on the first go-around. Since nothing has been said to suggest we change the vote, I'm going to recommend that the vote simply stand on item 26. Three, four, so we're just, we voted, that's, yeah, just hold that. All right, 18, we did. 25, we did. These are, oh, I see, he files them differently from the way I think they're filed. Okay. All right, next item.
Okay, Madam President, items 28 through 83, and we have card, you have cards on 62 and 82.
Well, we've done 82, and so on 62, I don't have any card.
And special, 72, please.
72 special. Let's get the specials first. Do we have any specials between, in those numbers? Okay.
Number 71, Madam President.
71, 69, 71, 72. Any other specials? All right, now. Mr. Fuhr, what were you just, oh, he's busy. Okay. All right, now then, we're...
Madam President, council member Hernandez's office requested that if 72 be called special, that item be continued to Friday.
All right. Do you have a problem with continuing it till Friday? Mike wanted to be here and was unable to be here today.
That's not the request.
That was 73.
That was 73? Okay. All right. And what were you, you were about to say something?
No, just, no, I thought you were asking me a question.
Yeah, okay. All right. So we don't have to continue 73. No one's called it special. Okay, now, where are we? Next item.
Items, okay, the items that have been called special, item 62 has a card, 69's been called special, 71 and 72, and otherwise, the votes will be for items 28 through 83 with those exceptions.
All right. Anybody on the council have anything to say on 28 through 83 with those exceptions? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 63.
And fourth with on 79.
All right. So we still have open three, four, 62.
16.
16, 20, 69, 71, and 72. All right. And then the closed sessions. Yeah, but those aren't exactly open. So let's, since Ms. Goldberg has to depart shortly, let's take item 62 next.
Yeah, because I'm also...
Okay, hold on.
It's up to you to decide whether you want to be a signator.
All right, hold on. We do have a number of people who've asked to speak on item 62. I want to make sure I've got them all this time, so I don't mess this up. Yes, all right, so we'll first have a public hearing. Do we need a staff presentation on this? No, I don't think so. We'll open the public hearing and hear first from Bishop Frederick Borsch, then Rabbi Stephen Jacobs, and then Madison Shockley.
Thank you. I am Bishop Fred Borsch, and I'm here today with my friends and colleagues, Madison Shockley and Steve Jacobs, to present to the members of city council a report entitled, "Let Justice Roll Down: American Workers in the New Millennium," and there are extra copies available, if a few people would like them. I understand that council members all have copies. Prepared by a task force in the Episcopal Church in this area, the report also draws on the knowledge and expertise of many other people of faith and concerned citizens with whom we have been collaborating. And we want to commend this city council for its thoughtfulness and its understanding in its pioneering work and support for a living wage for city workers and all who work for and are employed and benefiting from contracts with our city. We are appreciative of your perseverance and working to see that the living wage is implemented and extended. And with you, we recognize that we live in complex economic times, and there are critics who say that too many people earning living wages could be inflationary, as though to suggest that decent basic wages would be a cause of inflation. We know that there are those who believe wages should be kept as low as possible, way of holding down costs and taxes. But the first thing to think and say about making some efforts to deal with gross income equality is that it makes good economic sense. Capitalism and our kind of society finally do not work when inequalities become so great that the bulk of workers and families cannot reasonably share in society's benefits. There are ways we know in which economies can be strengthened from the top down. There can be some trickle-down effect, although there has been all too little of it for wage earners in the lower half of the economy in the last decade. What really does work, what improves life for everyone, is percolating up. Social Security helps us to see that poverty is a drag on the entire economy and society, and people coming up out of poverty benefit the whole economy. They share in the wealth-making. They can contribute to rather than be dependent upon services, not least their medical care. And in benefiting themselves, they no longer need benefits and tax-supported services from others. The second reason for commending such steps is the living wage is even more important, and it is well illustrated in "Let Justice Roll Down." When people are baptized in the Episcopal Church, they promise, among other things, to strive to respect the dignity of every human being, and that is a promise and hope I believe we share with many people in our society. Together, we recognize that deep poverty degrades the human condition and spirit, not least when people are working hard and yet remain mired in poverty. It is difficult to take much pride in worker life when one cannot afford decent medical care for one's daughter who has severe asthma, or for one's son whose ear infections are threatening to permanently damage his health and his future. For it is the stories that always get us, don't they? Let me conclude my remarks with another story. A woman I met when we were working together to try to be sure the opportunities for the living wage extended to the lowest-paid workers in our airport, the people who work for us by trying to guarantee our security, by giving aid to elderly travelers, helping us to buy a magazine or a soft drink. This woman has a son who is seven and has a slight learning disability, and she was having a hard time keeping things together and finding any time to spend with Sam because she had to work two jobs just so they could survive. When she gained the living wage for her work, she was able to let go of her second job, provide decent medical care for herself and Sam, and be a better mother for him. As a report by this nation's Roman Catholic bishops reminded us some time ago, the economy exists to serve the people and not the other way around. Hard work deserves a wage people can live on. Now, we have a ways to go to achieve an economy and society that truly does respect the dignity of every human being, and which truly respects the work of every human being. The complexities of the economy in our region, with all its connections to the international economy, are very real. But the living wage program is a beginning, an example of what can be done. It's a kind of witness to a city we would like to be, and how we, as a people, would like our tax dollars and influence to be used, as well as an important step in its own right. From here, we can go on to a more generally livable wage. From here, we can try to build a healthy and fair city and economy. And there are examples that you understand that the CRA is now trying to bring forth an opportunity to create such a situation for a more livable wage, and we would look forward to working with you and with them on that. The report, "Let Justice Roll Down," helps point the way. We commend it to you, and we commend this council for the steps you have taken in this direction. And I'd like next to calling my colleague, Rabbi Stephen Jacobs.
Friends, this is an unusual day for you and the city council, that you have to listen to four preachers. But the very fact is that there's an alliance that...
Rabbi, everyone preaches to us.
Rabbi, today you have to listen. That is representative of the growing alliance between the religious community of this great city and you who set the tone as to how we treat one another, as Bishop Borsch has so eloquently just stated, the direction in which we have moved. I have just returned from the city of Prague, where a number of rabbis had the great opportunity to meet with the cardinal and representatives of the pope as he prepared to make his historic statement on the relationship of the church with Jews and with others. It was an historic statement because it brings us closer together, and it comes at the beginning of this new century, of the opportunities to let go of the hatred and the violence that was so much a part of the 20th century. Prague is an incredible city, those of you who have visited. It is a city in which architecture is the main focus of what the city is about. We are here as the spiritual architects, working with you, as the kind of city this is becoming as we begin this new century. We appeal to you, as did Religious Leaders in '54 in the halls of Congress, to change the nature of the civil rights opportunities that were apparently needed and had to be changed and given opportunity in America. We are calling upon you to adopt, as you have been sensitive in the past, what we now call a declaration of conscience, as to how we treat the workers and how we, you, the architects of this great city, will let it unfold in this new century, to be a model to every city council in America, to adopt a declaration of conscience that we work together in building a fine city in which every person has the opportunity to live, not only securely, but with those of us who are more secure, being able to work together on their behalf. Thank you not only for listening, but acting on behalf of millions of people of this great city.
Madam President and members of the council, it is my privilege to address you this morning on behalf of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference and Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice, to commend to you this document, "Let Justice Roll Down." I know you have a lot to read, I know you have a lot to do, but I hope that you will take the time to examine this very thorough and deeply researched study. The Southern Christian Leadership Conference, throughout its history both locally and across the nation, has always been committed to not only racial justice, not only social justice, but also to economic justice. Martin Luther King died in Memphis, and he was in Memphis not to register the garbage workers to vote so much, but to demand for them, before the city council of Memphis, Tennessee, a wage of decency, a wage that would allow them to have some dignity, a wage that we now have come to call a living wage. And so that struggle continues from then until now, for workers throughout this country to be able to have the very fundamental human right that should they put in their 40 hours, that they can go home, feed, clothe, nourish, and bring health to their families. So we ask you, we don't come to lecture you, but to encourage you, and to let you know that we in the religious community will stand by you, that you have taken the leadership, the leadership in this movement, and we ask you and beg you, don't relinquish it, but continue to stand strong and to implement the living wage ordinance as broadly and as far as you can. Thank you for your attention. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you to all three of you. That closes the public hearing, and we have several people who want to be heard. Ms. Goldberg was first.
711.
Can you put her up here? She had asked earlier to be heard. Go. Did you want to be heard? Are you just waiting to make... Did you want to be heard, or are you just waiting to make the motion?
Well, actually, there really isn't much of an action item. The action was to ask them to come and present this.
Right.
I really only wanted to take the opportunity to thank them for doing that.
Okay.
And to tell you that I've had an opportunity to read it. I know that some of my colleagues have said that they're not sure if they were here when these were passed out, so maybe some of them might want to get copies again. But I think that it is an extraordinary thing to have the clergy come and actually thank this council for its leadership, and I think that's an appropriate thing for them to do. And I will say that they were very involved in making the events that happened, happen. And I just want to thank you for your efforts to continue to help us educate ourselves and also to educate the public about what it will take to make our society available, the American dream available to everyone in our society. And I want to thank you all very much for helping us. Bye-bye.
All right. Mr. Ridley Thomas is next.
Madam President, members of the council, today offers itself to us as one that can be momentous in the city of Los Angeles. We've heard presentations by Dr. Leon Sullivan, Bishop Borsch, Rabbi Jacobs, Reverend Shockley. Some might say that these two presentations are coincidental. Given the credentials of these persons who have spoken, I suspect it might be said that it is somewhat providential. It's my feeling that when an opportunity like that, or like this, presents itself, we ought to seize it. And when we have a theology of work generically defined, reinforcing the principles that all of us embrace about the dignity of labor, when we have a presentation that is as comprehensive in scope as the Sullivan Principles gone global, it would seem to me that it's fully in order to suspend the rules and to adopt in concept the presentation made by Dr. Sullivan and the presentations made by the speakers from the Theology of Work Task Force. And if it's in order, Madam President, I would so move and instruct the city attorney then to do what is deemed necessary with regard to preparation of the appropriate ordinances.
Okay. Mr. Wax.
No, I was, wanted to do the same thing, but wanted to defer to my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and thank him for bringing Dr. Sullivan here, as well as, of course, the people who joined us this morning. I was one of the fortunate ones to have been a member of the council the time that we did that. And it, you look back over your times as a legislator of when you, when you think you've made a difference, and to have Dr. Sullivan come today and to give recognition to the leadership role that this council played. And there have been other occasions when we have stepped forward and been first. We were the first city in the United States of any size to pass a law prohibiting discrimination against people with AIDS. We were the first to adopt the Sullivan Principles. We took similar roles with automatic weapons. And a number of other occasions where this council has really stepped forward on behalf of itself, the people of the city, but set an example for the rest of the country. And it was really thrilling to have him here this morning. And I'm pleased that Mr. Ridley Thomas did that and brought in this motion, and I would like to proudly second it.
Mrs. Chick.
Yes, I also want to thank my colleagues, but also representatives of the clergy who are here to address us today and for all of their hard work. I often engage in some wishful thinking that we had more partners like you, especially who have large constituencies as we do and have opportunities to speak from the pulpit and to help people be educated and understand about the problems and the solutions. It was, colleagues, I think you remember, not an easy step on the living wage. It was a battle. And I am ever so glad that we took that step and we're continuing to work with it. And I just thought, in looking through this very wonderful book "Let Justice Roll Down," there's a quote in here that I would like to read because I remember during that struggle for the living wage, we heard from many of our business leaders who felt that this was going to destroy the economy of the city, was going to drive businesses out, and did not at all understand the point of view that actually was going to help the economy. But there's a very good quote here from John Dan Daisberry, Dasbury, CEO of Northwest Airlines, quoted in the New York Times, 1998. He said, "Democracy doesn't work without certain rights being guaranteed. In my view, there is an unspoken bill of rights to capitalism. You just simply must take into consideration all of the various interests of society in the enterprise. And if you fail to do that, capitalism will fail." I wish we had this quote during some of the hearings when we were hearing from such worried people. But thank you again for all of the inspiration that you give us, and I hope we keep doing the right thing by this city.
All right. That seems to conclude the council members, the list of council members who wants to speak. We have Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion, seconded by Mr. Wax, to suspend the rules and adopt in concept the Sullivan Principles and the nuts and bolts of the report that's just been presented. Open the roll, close. Yes, Mr. Holden, what's your point of order?
Is this, is this the verbal motion?
Yes. You were here when he made the verbal motion.
Yeah, I understand. I thought maybe you all have it in writing. Are they going to write down verbatim what you're saying so it'd be considered a motion?
You know what, Mr. Holden? We have it on video. We have it on audio.
Wait, Mr. Farrar, I mean, Ms. Galanter, Ms. Galanter, please. The fact of the matter is that we present motions and they become a formal proceedings. And I just want to make sure that this is the same because it should carry that weight.
Yes.
It will be done, but we're going to vote on it in the meantime. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
What a surprise. Unanimous vote. That is approved.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes. Item number 25 has been called special, and I unfortunately have a family situation that requires me to not be present.
It was continued, Jackie.
I was wondering if it could be continued until Tuesday?
Do you want to reconsider it and to continue it?
Yes.
Because I'd like to be present, and then I will be positive to be here by Tuesday.
Okay.
So if that's okay, I'd like to-
If that is acceptable, we'll vote to reconsider item 25 and continue it until Tuesday. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. That is done. It is off until Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item.
Item number one is a public hearing item.
We do not have any cards on item number one. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on item number one? It's an ordinance. All right. Just making sure here. All right. Any council members?
Of course.
In that case, open the roll on item number one, and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next, I believe, is-
Item number three.
Thank you. All right. On item number three, we have a number of people who wish to be heard. So we'll, do we need a staff report first? No, I don't think so. It's Budget and Finance Committee report. Is there any problem with having the public hearing?
No.
All right. Well, let's open the public hearing, and we'll hear first from Stephen Gallegos, to be followed by Gail Watts, then Alex Gonzalez and Esther Schiller. Mr. Gallegos, are you here? There you are. Sorry, there's this poll in the way. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of this esteemed council, my name is Stephen Gallegos. I'm the Director of Public Advocacy for the American Heart Association, and we come before this body in support of the recommendations of the Budget and Finance Committee. The American Heart Association recognizes that the master settlement agreement between the state's attorneys general and the tobacco industry represents a historic opportunity to fund comprehensive tobacco control and prevention programs. We support the funding of local programs like the enforcement of AB-13, the Smoke-Free Bars and Workplaces Act, the proposed tobacco enforcement project to license tobacco product retailers, vendor-assisted sales programs, which are all proven to reduce tobacco use, especially among the tobacco industry's most targeted group of new smokers, the youth of America. The American Heart Association supports the use of the settlement funds to be used in accordance with the Centers for Disease Control's minimum funding recommendations, as well as other local health priorities. What is the legitimate use for tobacco funds coming to Los Angeles? The United States Department of Justice recently filed its suit to recover what the taxpayers have been paying to treat smoking illnesses. It also claims that tobacco companies were involved in a conspiracy and should have to give up the profits they earned as a result. On November 24th, 1998, it was announced in a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council that the city of Los Angeles would receive an estimated $312 million over the next 25 years. It goes on to say, and I quote, "These funds are the result of years of hard-fought litigation by states against tobacco companies. With this settlement, the city has an opportunity to help prevent future generations from suffering the many proven harmful effects of tobacco use. In order to avoid funding competing proposals which have little or no connection to smoking-related problems, the city should consult public health experts to advise it on the most effective use of these funds." Unquote. The motion to establish a public health task force with expertise in public health, medicine, community outreach, violence prevention, and other specialties which could help the city prioritize its expenditure of these funds was approved unanimously. The City Council knew that it was right to respect the intent of the settlement from the lawsuit and to use these funds for tobacco-related health issues. We did not support the mayor's use of these funds for street maintenance and sidewalk repair, but his arguments and pleas to make it happen were regarded as prudent. And now we hear him say he wants to use these same funds for another purpose. We do not believe that these funds should be touted as a relief for his fiscal emergency of the day. The situation that the city faces in any suit that seeks damages for wrongdoing should perhaps be addressed through the procedures outlined and voted for by the people of the city of Los Angeles and their adoption of the new charter of the city of Los Angeles. The establishment of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment allows our communities to address the problems in their area and find possible solutions to forward on to the City Council. The community that the Rampart Division is located within should be given that opportunity. The city should not be rushed to judgment with aberrant solutions to this egregious problem. We call upon the wisdom of our city councilors to use the settlement money for the purpose for which it was sought and to respect the intent of the lawsuit. Your discussions and your votes regarding the settlement money will go way beyond the city of Los Angeles and will resound as echoes in every city hall and with every legislative body across America as a precedent established and set for the uses of this money for the next 25 years. The American Heart Association asks, on behalf of all people and their families who have suffered the ravages and devastating effects of death and disease from the use of tobacco, to please remember your original pledge and counsel for this money and put it to work for the highest and best use of our citizens and for the citizens and youth of our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. Gail Watts.
Thank you, council. My name is Gail Watts, Project Director for the L.A. County Tobacco Control Alliance. The alliance represents 350-plus coalitions throughout L.A. County and the city of L.A. focusing on prevention and educating our culturally diverse communities on tobacco control issues. We do not support Mayor Riordan's proposal to securitize tobacco settlement money to pay the cost associated with the police corruption scandal. Taking away money from our children that was designed to educate children about the dangers of tobacco violates the spirit of the tobacco settlement and supports the tobacco industry who have stated that local governments would not use the tobacco settlement money for the children. We ask City Council to remember your constituents, remember the children. Please reject the mayor's proposal to securitize tobacco settlement money to pay for the police corruption scandal. We support the CAO proposal if it does not jeopardize the spirit of the tobacco settlement. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Gonzalez, if I'm reading this right, if I'm not, I apologize.
No, you're right.
Okay.
Thanks. My name is Alex Gonzalez. I'm with the L.A. Gay and Lesbian Centers Tobacco Control Alliance, L.A. County Tobacco Control Alliance, and we, I want to say that we do not support the intent of Mayor Richard Riordan's proposal regarding the tobacco settlement funds. We let the City Council stray from the original intent, and we don't support it. And that's what I'm here to say. Make it short and brief for you guys.
That's very clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Esther Schiller is our final speaker.
Esther Schiller, volunteer for Safe Smoke-Free Air for Everyone. We're an advocacy organization, and our mission is to protect people from involuntary exposure to secondhand smoke. I'm speaking in favor of item three. Los Angeles, the city's gotten a lot of kudos today, and it needs one more. Los Angeles has been a national leader in protecting workers and children from tobacco smoke and from the tobacco industry. We recognize the tobacco settlement is a revenue stream with no strings attached and that some of that money's going to have to be used for your current crisis. But some of the money should be set aside for tobacco control, and that should be at least the enforcement of existing tobacco control laws. The Smoke-Free Workplace Law, which includes smoke-free bars, enforcement and defense of the tobacco and alcohol billboards and signage ordinances, and enforcement of retail licensing for tobacco merchants and vendor-assisted sales, which are two ordinances which are soon to come before the council. It would be incredibly sad and ironic if the failure of justice in the police department destroyed other hard-fought and hard-won laws which also serve to protect the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing on item number three. Mr. Fuhr, did you wish to say anything regarding item number three? If not, oh, is anybody else? Mr. Holden. Mike, did you want to say anything? As you're the committee chair, I'll-
Yeah.
Okay. Yes? No?
I'm ready to go. Thank you, Madam Chair. All of us, city council members and the mayor, agree that it's imperative that we begin planning now to deal with what we know to be meaningful liability associated with Rampart. The balance we need to strike is between demonstrating good, thorough planning now to assure that when the day comes that money is needed in large quantities, we're ready to act and can do so deliberately. And on the other hand, not moving forward prematurely, incurring financial costs that taxpayers can't afford and making decisions that we may end up regretting later on. The report before you, and I'm going to move certain aspects of it this morning, strikes that balance. There are key goals we need to be advancing today. Funding whatever liability arises from Rampart with the least cost to the city that we can. Providing maximum flexibility to both this council and this mayor and future councils and future mayors when it comes to available funds, not hamstringing them down the road by decisions we make today. We need to work within the existing debt policy of the city. We have to recognize that we don't have a handle yet on the costs associated with Rampart, and that uncertainty factors into this. We need to finance Rampart costs without diminishing existing city services. We need to take into account risks, and there are risks on all sides of this issue. With those factors in mind, the committee conducted a very thorough examination of the proposal to securitize the tobacco funds and alternatives. The committee believes that we should not be securitizing the tobacco funds now. The costs of doing so are too high, higher than other alternatives. The amount of money we could get from that is less than is available from other sources that cost less. The timeframe which we are, would be using is much longer for tobacco funds than for other alternatives, and therefore it constrains future legislatures much more. So with those goals in mind and those thoughts in mind, and the mutual desires of good planning now and not diminishing existing city services that have been stated both by the mayor and by the council, I'd like to move certain items of the committee's report. And I'll say to my committee colleagues, I just been on the phone with the mayor's office, who requested that some of these items be continued for a week for further budget examination. And I think we can continue some of those items in the spirit of working as a team on this issue, and at the same time, adopt the core concepts that the committee recommended last week. I therefore move item one, the creation of an ordinance that establishes a reserve for extraordinary liability claims. Item two, that approves the- Item two, that approves the core concept the committee adopted last week, using a combination of cash and, if necessary, later judgment obligation bonds to meet our potential liabilities. Move item four, which instructs the CAO to work with city departments to encumber prior year funds to the reserve fund, so that we don't use funds we don't need this year and we try to create a pool that's necessary to assure we can meet our obligations down the road. And item seven, which is a reporting item. Holding on the desk for next week, item two, excuse me, item three, item five, and item six. Those items involve the actual transfer of funds. The mayor's office wants to further scrutinize the budget. Out of respect for the efforts that we need to be making in this city to work cooperatively, I will move that those items be continued for only one week, but for one week as was requested.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Yeah, let's find out. Come change to the floor for one week.
It seem like the mayor and I are in sync on this, because I would only be in favor of having the department set aside the funds that they find that could be considered a surplus, monies that they have not used. And that's, of course, when you're saying you're not going to appropriate 20 million, because we don't know what that number is. We have no idea it's available. Of course, item number five, to talk about a balance which has not been defined, we don't even know what that is. I agree with that also, that you're going to hold that over. And, of course, item number six, I agree with that as well. I think that, overall and generally speaking, if we have the departments identify the funds that have not been used or could be salvaged for this project, then you're really saying to each and every one of us that they could do that on a yearly basis, number one. And that money should have been in unappropriated balance and not in the department, which could later on be defined as a surplus. But since they do sloppy bookkeeping here from time to time, that process happened upon us much too often. The taxpayers are complaining from time to time that we could trim the fat here and trim and make it a lot slimmer than it has been. If we were to come up with 20 million-plus dollars and show that this money was available to be used within various departments, and now they're going to release that funds, then they didn't need the money in the first place. And if they needed the money in the first place and those programs were something that the city needed to serve us well, then it should have been spent. Now, if they can cut back, then your programs will in fact suffer. Remind me of a guy running for president, when he says, "I'm going to increase defense spending. I'm going to cut the taxes. I'm going to balance the budget." He lied to the American people, then, and something is kind of funny that's happening here now. But we'll see. I'm willing to wait and see. I think another week won't make a big difference. I just don't believe that we're going to be able to work it out so quickly as we would hope, but, of course, it must be worked out. I don't like the idea of sending signals to the plaintiffs, attorneys who are hungry, and even the attorney's going to represent us, that there are large sums of money available in the city, and we're going to get it all. I think that we have to keep a little quiet about that, because the money is not available, and whatever they win, they have to win in the court of law, and it's got to be justified by the decision of a jury.
Thank you. Mrs. Walters is next.
Thank you, Mrs. Madam President. I want to support the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee in supporting this report from the committee. My personal preference would be that we not continue the items, but the suggestion that they only be continued one week is very important. And it's very important that we hold to that, council members, that we not continue them longer than one week. It is prudently responsible. It is prudently mandated that we take this action to set aside monies in a liability account. And, of course, we don't know what it's going to be, but this is the time to begin saving for that, just as we would in our personal budgets. When we know something is staring us in the face in the future, we start saving in the present to be able to meet that future obligation. And this is the time for us to begin saving for meeting this future obligation. We know it's coming, and it would be truly foolhardy of us not to take these steps today to make certain that we have some reserve monies with which to address this problem, whether it's judgment obligation bonds or some other mechanism. But I agree that the securitization of the tobacco monies is not a fiscally responsible way to approach this for several reasons. One, we don't know the ultimate amount, and if we securitize the tobacco monies, we would be saying that of those monies, we would realize only about a third, and the rest would go to pay off the debt. And that is not a good deal, beside the fact that we don't know what the total amount of the debt or the requirement is going to be. There are many other reasons not to securitize that, the tobacco monies. But the most important action that we can take here today is to pass this report. Bear in mind that items two, five, and six will be before us in one week, and that that's the second step we must also take to be certain that the city is ready to meet this obligation.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, are you ready for the previous question?
I'm always ready for the previous question. There are three more speakers. So would you like to...
You want to survey the House to see if they are anxious to speak?
No, I think they are.
All right. Well, let me ask the question. Are we on the verge of continuance? Are we going to be able to move items one, two, and four and hold a balance? Because that's what I'm prepared to support.
The motion, Mr. Fuhrer, is one, two, four, and seven. One, two, four, and seven, and we would be holding three, five, and six.
Well, I think that's the direction.
No, three, five, and six.
Madam President, I think that's the direction in which we should move. I think it's clear that we must act, and I think we must act prudently. This is a prudent course, and I acknowledge the work of the Chair, as well as Committee of Budget and Finance, as well as the CAO and the CLA, to get us in a direction where we can prepare for what is obviously going to be a very challenging and even painful set of circumstances. We know that. We needn't belabor the issue. We have to do it. We have to do it, and I think we ought to do it wisely, and this is an appropriate course.
Thank you. Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I think my colleagues, particularly those on Budget and Finance Committee, have spoken well about what is an appropriate prudent course. And clearly, we, first off, need to create the ordinance today and adopt that, which we are talking about doing. And it's interesting. I mean, it really says it. It's a reserve for extraordinary liability claims. Rampart may be just one of them. We clearly have seen some of the other lawsuits and where we are using judgment obligation bonds, and that may not be a prudent course if, to put all of our eggs literally in that basket. But the CAO and CLA together recommended was a course like anyone's financial family budget. Save a little, borrow a little, but use your money most effectively and most prudently. And that's what I think this report from Budget and Finance outlines. I have no problem with requesting a hold on how much money we will put into it now, but I think it's clearly the intent of Budget and Finance to start putting some money into it, where we can, what is prudent, what is appropriate. There will be further discussion as we look at the budget again, which we'll be starting to do in just about six weeks, about where we go further than that. But I think putting the account in our budget line item, creating it, and then starting to put money into it, is a course that we have got to take very, very seriously and prudently on a financial course. And so I'm concurring with the recommendation of the Chair.
Thank you. I just want to point out, before we go further, that we're down to 11 members, which means we cannot adopt an ordinance today. We can adopt the report, but we can't adopt the ordinance. So it'll go over... Well, if somebody withholds, can it come up tomorrow? Or it still goes over a week? We'll continue it. But let's first hear from... Joel's not here. Mrs. Chick is next.
Yes, I rise to say thank you to the hard-working members of the council's Budget and Finance Committee and for coming forward with what I think is a very responsible and yet somewhat conservative and cautious plan, and certainly, in my mind, preferable to the recommendations that were proposed from the mayor's office some weeks ago regarding the tobacco settlement dollars. It's very clear that there are important unknowns, but it's in terms of how much money and when we will have to pay out. But what is before us, colleagues, is a responsible step that says we need to plan for it, we need to set aside money, but we also don't need to go to the full lengths, because many of these claims are going to be coming in over a period of time. So I look forward to the remaining pieces coming forward next week, and will be very much interested to hear if there are any objections, because I think that items, is it three? The items that talk about setting aside dollars now for an emergency liability fund, I think, is an important piece of this, and we do need to act on it next week at the latest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, I just have a simple question. As the items that we're moving forward, does that preclude using the tobacco funds? Because I don't want to eliminate any options at this point. I know that there's been some speakers from some of the interest groups before us, but I don't want to eliminate any options at this point. So if I vote yes for it, am I assured that we're not eliminating that option?
Yeah, there's nothing in here that eliminates the option. We're not voting on the other.
No, but we are approving an approach that contemplates a combined use of cash and judgment obligation bonds to deal with the Rampart issue. Future councils can change that policy if they wish to on a subsequent day, but that would be the policy we'd be adopting today. And the committee, the committee did believe that the other alternatives are superior to the tobacco securitization approach.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Fuhrer, you're up next. And let me just point out that if we act today on the committee report, we won't have the votes for the ordinance. That will hold it over for a week. If we continue it until tomorrow, and we have 12 people, then it'll be up for first reading.
Yeah. Ms. Glantner, I think, Madam President, that it's good for us to take an action today since the balance of the matters are returning next week anyway, doing the ordinance...
It's fine with me. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on what we are and are not voting.
Right. I recommend we take the action we can today with the balance continued for a week.
Okay. And that was your time. There being no other speakers at this moment. Open the roll on Mr. Fuhrer's motion, which is to adopt items one, two, four, and seven, and to continue items three, five, and six for...
One week.
One week. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
All right. That is approved. And the... All right. Next item.
Item number four.
All right. Now, item number four is an ordinance, and once again, because we have only 11 members present, we will not be able to vote on this in any case. I do have... That's nice. Thank you. Vote early and vote often. We do have one person to speak in opposition and three in support, but we will not be able to take a vote on this today since we don't have the...
We can vote on the committee report.
Yeah, we can vote on the committee report, but not on the ordinance. So if there's no objection, we'll open the public hearing... Well, what do you want to do, members? Do you want to have the public hearing today, in which case we will not have the public hearing when we do it again? All right. So we'll open the public hearing on item number four and hear first from the opposition, Mr. Ted Hayes.
Madam President.
I'm sorry. Ms. Zakowski.
I understand Mr. Hayes had to leave, and he did want to speak, and he was the only one in opposition. Maybe we should just go ahead and put this over one week since the ordinance has to go over.
Fine with me. Any objections? This will be continued for one week. Okay. Next item.
Item number 16. Call special by Councilmember Ms. Zakowski.
Cindy, you're up.
I just want to make a motion to delete item number five in the committee report. It's a housing project in my district that I would like to delete at this time. We may bring it back at a later time. And we've checked with Councilmember Pacheco, and he concurs.
Okay. So we have before us... We don't? What's going on over here?
16 minus item five.
So if we have to do the... Why don't you come up to the table and explain this to us on the tape? We are advised that we have to do a TEFRA hearing. Does that mean we would need... Do we need a separate special notice, and are we therefore precluded from acting today?
No, you can act today, but you need to hold the hearing and let those people speak.
Well, nobody has asked to speak. It's the problem. All right. Mr. Pitti.
Members of the council, this is a TEFRA hearing. For housing bond projects, we're required to hear it by state law. If there's no one testifying, then that's fine. We've held a hearing and taken the appropriate action.
Well, we have no... Nobody has asked today to be heard on this. So then we're legally...
That's correct.
All right. So we have... Just to be sure, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody who wants to be heard. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And item 16, am I on the right one here? Is before us, as amended by Councilmember Ms. Zakowski. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 20. Call special by Councilmember Ms. Zakowski.
I believe that was the next item. Where is she? You want to just hold that for a moment? All right, let's hold that one for a moment. And moving right along, we go to...
Number 69.
69. Mr. Savornich called item... Mr. Savornich? Item 69, you called it special?
Yeah.
There was a substitute motion floating around the desk here somewhere. Would you go push the button so we can...
We do have item number 69 before us, and there is an amending substitute motion, 69A, which is requesting that this item come before the council next Tuesday. I believe we do have a quorum. So I would ask that we adopt 69A rather than item number 69.
Mr. Holden.
Right. This is Rule 16 that we vote to. I didn't recall anybody asked for 10 votes to hear. It was called special.
But that's not...
Pardon? I know. It was special, and the votes were never taken, as whether or not you want to hear this.
Does that mean you don't want to hear it now that you've heard it?
Before you can discuss it.
If you want to discuss it, go ahead.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, that was... Procedure is that you have to say, take 10 votes to hear this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. When you're the council president, you will take care of doing that every single time.
No, 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 I'm not aspiring to be council president, and you should act like you are. And I'm saying...
Thank you, sir.
I'm just saying...
I'll check in with you every morning. You can give me lessons here.
No, I don't want you to do that. Do it in the afternoon.
So what is it you want to... What is it you want to do with respect to item 16?
Item 69.
69, I'm sorry. What is it you want to do with...
69? There was never a vote taken as to whether or not we're going to hear this, or whether it's going to go to committee.
That's what we have this whole procedure for. If you have a motion to send it to committee, you're free to make that motion, and we will be happy to consider it.
No, I'm on a point of order, Mr. Tom.
No, no, you actually got called on your speaker time here, which is running. Do you want to make a motion to send it to committee?
No, I think that you have decided that without a motion. So the time is waiting, and let me ask you a couple of questions. Maybe Mr. Savornich can tell me why the Board of Inquiry's report should be brought to us. You put this motion in, Mr. Savornich?
Well, Mr. Holden, I felt that since both the mayor's office, the Board of Police Commissioners, the Los Angeles Times, soon-to-be the Board of Supervisors, had a preliminary report on where we were going in regards to this Board of Inquiry, that the city council, as the governing body of the city, should at least have the opportunity to hear it also.
Oh, so did the city... Did the police department report to the Board of Supervisors on this matter?
They're going to.
Oh, they're going? They haven't done it yet.
No, that's why I thought...
I thought maybe we should get it first.
All right. In reference to the Board of Inquiry report, certainly, I think that there's a lot of information in that report. If it's expanded upon, can be incriminating, that is, as far as the city is concerned. is concerned. And so when it gets to that juncture, Mr. Savornich, are you understanding of the fact that some of that might have to be in closed session, which is not a part of your motion? Your motion suggests that we have a report, and that will be an open session, but the city attorney, of course, should be present at all times to make sure that our backs are covered at all times.
That's mine.
Mrs. Walters.
It's my understanding that we're going to hear from the chief today on these matters. Is that correct?
I have agreed that that item, which would then give the chief notice that we would like him to come on Tuesday, that's what the motion asks for, that he come on Tuesday to talk about it. So I think that's...
So Mr. Savornich's substitute motion is to create that opportunity?
To create the Tuesday opportunity for the report by the chief to the council on the full report itself, which has been made public.
Well, I think we really should have this presentation sooner rather than later. And it's just getting deeper and deeper and deeper, and we, as the council, need a briefing where all of us can hear as much information as they have together. And I would not... Like, when is the Board of Supervisors' presentation?
I thought they voted against that.
They voted to have a presentation. They haven't had it yet, though.
Well, I was wondering when they're going to have it, because they only meet on Tuesdays. So if they're going to have their presentation next Tuesday, my question goes to, shouldn't we hear it first?
Well, I think that's a very good question, and I think we need to find that out. Perhaps somebody can go and find out right now.
Yeah.
Right, but Mrs. Walters' point, Mrs. Walters' point is that if they're presenting there on Tuesday, maybe we should have it here before Tuesday, right?
That's right. That's exactly right.
So...
That unlike wives, we should be the first to know.
Gotcha. All right, so can somebody find out for us whether the supervisor's presentation is scheduled for Tuesday? If it is, perhaps you would amend your motion. We'll do it in here on Friday beforehand. If it's not, until... Mr. Dayton, do you know the answer to this? I'm sorry, too bad we didn't get that on the mic.
What you could do is schedule it for Friday, and if, in fact, with the intent to continue it to Tuesday, if the Board of Supervisors...
All right.
That way, we would be, we have it covered, and...
Either way.
And either way, and then we can move on.
And we can be clear to the police department that we want to hear it first.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we can continue to Friday, and then with the intent that...
Wait, hold on. Friday's agenda, what? We can always make a... We'll just continue.
Continue it to Friday.
All right, now, hold on. We have a couple more people who want to be heard before we do that. Mrs. Walters, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Chick.
Yes, colleagues, we do have here today people from our personnel department who, and one civil service commission who came down to address us on this item, and I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense to at least hear from them today in particular, because the question that I keep asking, and I think we could have answered very quickly today, we keep hearing through quotes in the paper, through statements in the Board of Inquiry report, that there are serious problems in the recruiting and in the choosing of candidates for the police academy, and that the statements from our police department are that the problems lie with the personnel department to some extent, and that they, the police department, has had to hire officers that they did not want to hire, that did not meet the high standards of the department. Colleagues, I don't know how accurate that is at all, but we've got staff here who could respond, and there's one simple question that I would like to have answered. Madam President, could we ask our acting general manager, at least, or personnel, to come forward and...
Well, on your time, we can certainly do that.
Could you? And as you come forward, here's the question. How many times has a candidate rejected by the police department who was appealed to the Civil Service Commission and been certified for employment by the Commission, actually been hired by the police department? Or I'll rephrase it even shorter. How many times in the last five or 10 years has the police department been forced to hire a candidate that it did not want to hire because of an action of the Civil Service Commission or the Personnel Department?
Okay, she has a minute left, so go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Ray Allen. I'm the interim general manager for the Personnel Department. With me is Sharon Schuster, the president of the Civil Service Commission, and Gail Thomas, who's the assistant chief of our Public Safety Employment Division. In direct response to the question from Councilwoman Chick, I'm not aware of any situation where the police department has had to hire or has chosen to hire someone that they didn't think was qualified on the basis that the Civil Service Commission or the Personnel Department staff had felt that they didn't meet the necessary measure to be disqualified in some civil service selection process. It's always the appointing authority, whether it's the chief of police or the general manager or the Department of Transportation, that ultimately makes that decision. Now, that's not to say that there aren't situations where, as the report indicates, the number of people they prefer not to hire might interfere with the total number of people they put in a class. I'm not even aware that has happened, frankly. That's not been suggested to us. When those concerns do arise, we deal with them, and we work with the department to try to resolve those. There has not been, in our judgment, based on, and we don't have the background files of those 14 problem officers that are referred to in the BLI report. We are requesting those. We'd like to take a close look at them, because we'd like to know if there are things that we're not aware of that occurred in those. There's no indication in the files we do have on those officers that they were recommended to be disqualified by the police department or were in any way overturned by the Personnel Department. But I think we ought to look at that.
Perhaps we could ask you to come, and since we're now, I want to call on the next council member who wants to be heard, perhaps we could ask you, I think it would be prudent indeed for you to be here when the chief makes his report on the Board of Inquiry report. And that would, I'm sure there will be questions like this that will arise at that time, and we'd rather have you answer them than him, so... Hold on now, let's see what else we have. Ms. Misakowski is next.
Thank you, Madam President. This part of the report, I appreciate having personnel here, and I think that they should be here when the chief comes, but it is clearly something that I think we're going to have to take back to committee. Contrary to what Mr. Allen says, I have read the Board of Inquiry report, and, Ms. Chick, I'm not sure whether or not you, in reading the Board of Inquiry report, there is at least one of the officers, which was indicated, at least in the Board of Inquiry report, that they had, that the police department had not, had deselected, did not want to hire. It was appealed and was overturned. So there is at least one, and it was one of, at least...
According to the police department.
Right.
That information hasn't been shared with personnel, which is rather shocking.
Right. That needs to be done, and we need to be collaborative about what this process is, because it's something that, as I became chair of the Public Safety Committee, I heard from both the departments, from both departments, that there had been some problems and some concerns, and that they needed to work together, and it was told that they had been. In fact, I have heard more recently that there is a closer collaboration. Part of the problem, members of the council, is that it relates to the issue of the very, very, very low numbers that we had been getting for a while in recruitment, and that people who had been sent over to the police department and then deselected, they kept coming up again and again, and as those numbers got very small, and as the department was, is under orders and regulations, whether, any number of different things in terms of how they balance those pools coming in, there were people who had been on their rejection list who kept coming through, and there was less and less and a narrow margin in terms of where they could de-select them. So I think we really need a very full collaborative process between personnel and police department to determine where or if there's a problem, where those problems are occurring. I mean, is it an honest assessment of a judgmental difference between two agencies that needs to be aired, or is it more problematic than that as a consequence of what we were looking at with very, very, very low pool numbers? I mean, we had classes as low as 20 and 21 with very low applicant numbers to start with. So it is something I think we need to further address, but I would like and hope that by the time this comes back, hopefully next Tuesday with the chief making the presentation, that, Mr. Allen, you have the information where the Board of Inquiry investigators have indicated, at least in this one instance, what the problem is so that we can use it as a case study, and hear the personnel's response as to that particular singular issue. Again, without naming an individual, which I think the Board of Inquiry managed to do without identifying, but at least as a case study, we need to have that information.
Well, I'm pleased that we are going to hear from Personnel Department simultaneously then next week with the police department. I thought I heard you say, Mr. Allen, that you had asked for some information that you think is forthcoming from the department, but that up to this point, other than reading the Board of Inquiry, there has been, there has not been an exchange of information about these particular problems that were raised in the report.
That's correct. We were neither consulted in the study that led to the report, nor have we been consulted as a result of the report.
Yeah, well, see, I hope we're all listening to this, you know, in terms of the credibility and the value of the Board of Inquiry report, that the police department is saying there's a problem with hiring and a problem with the Personnel Department, and hasn't gone and shared the information and discussed it with the Personnel Department. That is what I would call about one hand not knowing what the other's doing, that is not teamwork, that is not bringing the different players involved together to jointly reach a consensus and solve a problem. I would also point out that the conclusions made in that Board of Inquiry report, looking at four officers and one who supposedly had, the department was forced to hire, and this officer ended up having problems, before we decide to agree that there's a problem and things need to be changed, we need to look at not only how many officers were hired by the department that they didn't want to hire and whose standards they feel were not met by this applicant, and later subsequently that applicant had discipline problems or serious misconduct. And what's the number of officers who did meet our standards, who the department wasn't forced to hire by Personnel Department, who ended up having misconduct problems? You can't draw illogical conclusions in the way I feel that Board of Inquiry report did, and I think this is a very important issue that is perhaps indicative of other things in the report, but certainly on this point, before we go rushing to change how we screen and how we hire, before we go rushing to look at taking a civilian department that is expert in hiring for all of our city departments out of the loop, as the chief is recommending, we need to be very thoughtful, and we need to listen to voices other than the management of the police department. We need to listen to the management and to the commissioners and to the staff of the Personnel Department, and I will eagerly do that next week, and hopefully you will be given the information you need by the police department in advance so that you can come here and thoughtfully respond to allegations and to questions that we might have. Thank you.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I do believe that the motion before us is to continue till Tuesday in checking the council attendance. There will be the majority of the council, I believe 14 members here Tuesday, 15 members here Wednesday, and I think the more council members present to hear this item, the better. And so I think Tuesday would probably be our optimum day. The CLA has checked with the County Board of Supervisors, and they do not have anything scheduled for Tuesday in regards to a presentation by the police chief or the police department or the police commission before the Board of Supervisors. So I think Tuesday would be the appropriate day, and I move that we adopt 69A.
And we'll just make clear in, when we vote on that, that our goal is to have the chief report to the city council before he reports to the supervisors. So if there is, well, we have, we got a couple more people here. So if there's a problem with, when the board is going to hear it, we'll come back and deal with that.
Rejected an investigation presentation by LAPD, so the Board of Supervisors is only having their report from the DA and the public defender.
Ah, okay, well, that clarifies things. Mr. Burnson is next.
Yes, with what voice I have left. Let me just say that an interesting thing has happened in the past few weeks since Crash has been disbanded. All of a sudden, our districts are covered with graffiti. All of a sudden, we have more gang activity, and this is a result, what happens, I'm not defending Crash and what some of these individuals did that was beyond the law. They should be brought to justice for that. But to abandon a program that was aimed at protecting communities, that may not be the permanent thing to do either, and I know that I'm very unhappy with the activity I see taking place in my district, and I hope the chief will do something to take care of that in the near future. Let me just say about the being able to do the job. You know, it's difficult for a department or for the Personnel Department to hire the best people when their hands are tied. I was on this council, I think there were only three of us on this council, when the Fan Sean Blake settlement took place, and when we had to make concessions on the physical size and so forth of officers. But we also had our programs of trying to balance the minorities to reflect our community. Now, I'm not adverse to that. I think that's the thing that we should do, and I supported it at the time. But we have to do a better job of outreach so that we get better candidates. We're not getting the candidates, the fact that we had to bypass some people that didn't meet the qualifications as far as gender and race and so forth, and we had to hire people who were perhaps really not qualified, which has come out in this investigation. This has to change. We've got to do a better job. There has to be better qualified people out there in the minority communities who will come forth and want to serve on our police department. That's where we failed. They have, their job is made difficult because they have to do, follow certain guidelines that were set forth in the court decision and in the consent decree. So we need to do a better job of getting people of all mixtures that we have this city, because this is truly a cosmopolitan city. We have to do a better job of outreach to get better candidates, and until that happens, you're going to have difficulty in filling these positions with qualified people.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
I think I just wanted to convey the information about the...
The Board of Supervisors. All right, so what we have before us is 69A, which is to continue the, ask for the report next Tuesday, and we'll ask the Personnel Department and Civil Service and whoever else you think is appropriate to be there as well so that we can try to answer all the questions at once. All right, that motion is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all. All right, can we go back to item 20 now? Is that, let's do item 20, which, Ms. Misakowski, you called that special.
Thank you, Madam President. This is on the issue, we had had a motion in council last month raising some question about Staples Center, and that it was under a temporary certificate of occupancy, and final checking and clarification of the alarm system had not been done. We took it in Public Safety Committee, dealt with the matter, and were assured that it was just days away from getting its final clearance, and this report does indicate that it was on schedule. We have now had the complete permanent certificate of occupancy given to Staples Center. It is operating, the alarm system is operating. In addition to that, the committee did recommend that we look at this as a budget item, because when there are temporary certificates of occupancies and fire watches that need to occur, the developers of some of the larger projects have to pay for that, and we want to make sure that through the CIO and our analysts, particularly at the Fire Department, that we are getting full recompense for this, and it's not let to go in that position for a long period of time. We were assured by the Fire Department that every extra-duty officer who needed to be on watch during the time that the center was open were paid for totally out of the Staples Center project private funds, and, but at this point, it is, I just wanted to let everyone know that it is now fully operational, the alarm system is fully operational, and we are looking further at full recovery in the future as these types of projects are brought in and allowed to operate under a temporary certificate of occupancy with the special fire systems.
So just let me be sure about this. So with respect to item 20, we ought to approve it?
Right.
Okay. Anybody else? In that case, open the roll on item 20, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Ladies and gentlemen, we are down to the bare minimum, and we have four, we have three items left, no, two items in the closed session, which at least one of the cases must be dealt with today, and the special meeting, which has a couple of things that have to be dealt with today as well. So I just caution everybody. And we move to the next item, which I believe is item 71.
Right. Call special by Councilmember...
Mr. Padilla, push the little button, and we're on. Go.
Thank you, Madam President. It's been a long morning, and...
It's not over yet. It's not over yet.
It's not over yet. You're exactly right. But if, we can recall not just events recently, as recent as yesterday and the day before, but more significant events as recently as last week, which called to our attention the dangers and hazards of air flights and airspace over not only the San Fernando Valley, but all of the Los Angeles area. That's what has compelled me to submit this motion, asking for our Department of Airports to consult with the FAA, with the National Transportation Safety Board, and any other regional authorities as appropriate, and report back to the council through Committee First on any recommendations they have on policies and procedures to make our airspace safer. That's the gist of this motion, and I ask for your support.
Thank you. I should just tell you that I hope it works, but the FAA has a distressing tendency to tell you that everything is under control, and they'll never let anything happen that's not safe. Having said that, open the roll on item 71, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item. Item 72, call Special by Councilmember Fewer. Mr. Fewer, would you push the little, go.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, recall when we were getting presentations from the Chief of Police and colleagues of the chiefs and the command staff about problems within the Police Department. One of the issues that was identified orally and subsequently in the Board of Inquiry report was inadequate supervision, both in terms of the quality of supervision and in terms of the number of supervisory staff within the Police Department to oversee people at the lower echelons of the department in the field. We have, at that point, I asked the chief if he thought it would be advantageous for us to seek a waiver from the federal government related to our COPS hire money, which up to then had been attributable solely to new field officers, so that instead we could redirect our efforts and use that money in some, in whole or in part, to pursue supervisors. The chief thought it was a good idea. Subsequent to that, I introduced a motion to get the city to adopt a full court press in Washington to pursue that approach, and that's the motion that's before us today. I urge us to adopt it. Adoption would come at a critical time because this issue has been brought to the direct attention of those who administer this grant in Washington. Over the past couple of days, our colleague, Councilmember Padilla, was involved directly in delivering a letter from the city to that effect, and I will defer to Alex to detail those events. But I think it's important, notwithstanding the work of Mr. Padilla and the mayor and others who have been promoting the same idea, it turns out, in recent days, that the council unanimously go on record supporting these efforts so that all of us in the city are speaking with one voice. I'll defer to our colleague.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you again, Madam President. Seems like we're working a lot with the federal government these days. But, yes, I was.
Are they working a lot with us?
That's, that's the goal here. Timing was interesting. It actually worked out pretty well for me to be able to deliver that letter and that message directly to the Director of the COPS Program and the Department of Justice. All I can tell you is they were very open and positive about it. How easily we can, we can accomplish it is a different question, but they certainly understand the needs. What impressed me actually was, as I walked into Director Fager's office, he was in the middle of reading the Board of Inquiry report. So yes, they are engaged, yes, they are involved, yes, they want to be helpful in resolving the situation and improving the public safety in the city of Los Angeles. That's the initial feedback. We'll be working directly with their office and with our appropriate congressional representatives to make any changes necessary at the congressional level.
Ms. Misakowski.
This motion asks for a report back within 30 days. I'm reporting that as Chair of Public Safety Committee, we have this matter on Monday. And this, along with the motion that Mr. Padilla and I brought in today to talk about this grant, the other grant that's been in the news of late, we will bring that in on Monday and to council as quickly as possible so that we can actually move on it and not have these monies sitting and not being utilized.
So again, if I could just ask you to clarify, are we then saying that what's proposed in item 72 is already underway?
Yes, in fact, these were, these were requests from the mayor's office and the members of the council and the CLA to contact Department of Justice. In fact, that has already occurred, but I think we should approve the motion in any case, and also react that rather than the 30, although there was a request for 30 days back, 30 days, we will be back to you sooner than 30 days.
Frankly, the second moving provision in light of Ms. Misakowski's leadership is moot by her action, and she's really got it under control, so.
Okay, glad to hear it. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, I was interested in inquiring. So all members are on receipt of the letter to the Attorney General from the mayor, and this action is in concert, or we out of sync, or we together? We together, Madam President?
On your time for 30 seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Maybe 10 seconds, actually.
Five.
We discussed it in the context of the Board of Inquiry report here, I introduced the motion, and then in the meantime, the mayor's office concurs this is a good approach, and so they sent a letter. As the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, the council has yet to act as the council body, but it's important that we all act on the same page.
So it sounds like we are in concurrence.
All right. Thank you, Madam.
Treasure this moment.
Well, I'm trying to highlight something here, Madam President.
Mr. Holden.
Oh, you, the mayor, I got a copy, he's already sent the letter.
Yes.
So this action is after the fact.
Now, this is, as Mr. Fewer just explained, the mayor has sent a letter as the mayor, and this is an effort to put the council as the council on record, essentially on the same track as the mayor.
Oh, except.
A moment of celebration.
He needs 10 days, he can veto what we've done. Is that right, Mr. Fewer?
On this item, Mr. Holden.
So the point is, he's, if, now, that's a big question, who's setting policy around here? And they'll come before us, I'm sure, but the mayor has always stated before, as the mayor, he can do anything he wants in this regard in terms of trying to secure financial support for the city of Los Angeles for any department. And I applaud him in addressing this letter to Janet Reno, even without the council having taken a motion to do so. Now, if the council, if the council want to speak out and say, let's have the CLA do this as well, and the CLA want to ride his coattail, finally, after signing off on that motion that's coming before the council, that's going to decide who's in charge of intergovernmental relations, so be it. You're going to ride his coattail, Mr. Deaton. That's what you're doing in your motion. But in any case, Mr. President, members, this is a matter that came up a number of years ago. It was discussed at that time whether or not we'd have a number of sergeants and lieutenants in order to supervise these personnel, the police personnel, new recruits. And the Police Department, my best recollection said they could manage, that was the mayor's policy to hire these people, to take the money, even though we felt that we ran out of funding after the number of years that the feds would supply the funds and that we have to pick up the gap from the general fund to continue to support these police officers. It was all orchestrated then, and now it's come home to ruse, that is the chickens, because this point was made then. And nobody's, I guess a few of you sat around and say, yes, let's address it at that time. It was discussed that the Janet Reno, the Justice Department, would not give us monies for supervising personnel, but just for recruits. If you can get her to do that, fine. It had to be a tragedy to occur in order to make that happen, and I hope it does, in fact, happen, because we do need the sergeants and the lieutenants and the personnel to supervise these new recruits. This is something that, this is a big chunk that we bit off, the mayor bit off, and now you got to swallow it. It's unfortunate, but it's always, putting out the fire, putting up a traffic signal after somebody's been killed is not the way to go, and we shouldn't continue to do that. We do it too often around here. Here's another clear example. And my time expired.
You got it. Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, I want to say two things that are sort of unrelated, but very significant to me. One is, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to create this option. It's important, like I said earlier, in terms of the funding, that we have options, and I don't want to eliminate any, so I do support the motion. However, I do want to clarify something and make a very strong caveat here. In no way should anyone interpret this motion that we support the finding that the movement from seven to one supervision of officers to eight to one is a finding that I agree with or that we agree with, because we still haven't got our independent review of the Board of Inquiry report, we still haven't got our information from the Police Commission. So creating the option, I agree with, but I think it would be wholeheartedly misunderstood that we are saying that that change in supervision had, was the cause of this problem. I think there are many other factors in terms of the culture of the Police Department, the code of silence, and the other things that are going on at Rampart, that were going on at Rampart, that could explain what happened, and this change in the number of supervision should not be seen as a, the mechanism that create this problem. So I don't want anyone to misunderstand my vote. My vote is very clear, to create the option, but in no way does it endorses the finding or the chief's position that this change was an impetus to the type of corruption that we found at Rampart. So I want to make it very clear that I do support the motion with that caveat in mind.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. Just to further reiterate that there was collaboration, this motion was brought in last week requesting the mayor and/or the CLA to communicate. The mayor wrote the letter. It was communicated by way of Mr. Padilla to Department of Justice and Mr. Deaton. The CLA were also in Washington, was also in Washington last week and communicating with Justice. So it was, within a less than a week turnaround, all forces together going and saying, we need this option, we got concurrence from DOJ, and we are going to be considering it in committee in terms of answering Mr. Pacheco's concerns about what and how we best use it.
All right, quick, before anybody else hits the button, let's vote on item 72. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Madam President, do you wish to recess the regular meeting to go into the special meeting?
Yes, let's do that. This, we will recess the regular meeting and call to order the special meeting. Please call the roll.
Burnson, Jake, Fewer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, DePadilla, Ridley Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. Let's start with the first item, item number one.
Item number one, items for which public hearings have not been held, items one and two are both communications from the Human Relations Commission relative to approving employees to the previously exempted position of senior project coordinator and project coordinator.
Mr. Fewer.
Madam Chair, should motions be required? I move both one and two.
Thank you. That's very helpful indeed. Is Mr. Holden still here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. In that case, open the rolls, close the roll. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mrs. Walters.
I'm going to, unless you need my vote.
It's 10 votes are required, unfortunately.
All right, I'll give a courtesy vote, but register, again, a real concern for the civil service exempt positions, and they're proliferating, and we need to take a closer look at that.
Well, you do raise that frequently, and I hope that we are, in fact, going to do as you suggest and take a closer look, but I think that the Human Relations Commission will very much appreciate your, your support of this. Open the roll on items one and two. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are both approved, and we will, forthwith on both of them, we will now, that concludes the special meeting, and we'll go back into our regular meeting. And I believe the only item left is one of the closed sessions. So we are going to go into closed session to consider items 84 and 85, and we will ask.
Do you wish to clear the desk first?
Yeah, let's clear the desk. I have no cards on public comment, as far as I know. Go ahead, let's clear the desk while we're clearing the room.
Motions for posting and referral.
Those are approved.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused May 5, 2000, city business meets council policy.
That is approved.
Councilmembers Savornich, request to be excused Tuesday, March 28, and Wednesday, March 29, personal business meets council policy.
As long as it meets policy, we'll approve that, too.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused Friday, May 19, city business meets council policy.
Okay, that's approved.
And Councilmember Ridley Thomas also requests to be excused Friday, March 24, city business need a motion.
All right, Mr. Savornich moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, and this would be the time for public comment, but we have no cards, so we will declare the public comment period closed and move into closed session. Are we clear?
In the case of Nader Azadi versus City of Los Angeles, settlement in the amount of $134,060.39.
And Mr. Holden wishes to be heard.
Are you going to say, are you going to say in public what you said in private? Yes.
By closing the parks?
No, no, I'll say in public what I said in private. And what I said in private is that these people who go out and then play in our parks and claim that the city is responsible for the injuries, that's absurd. For an example, I gave my own personal situation, playing baseball at Rancho Cienega Park. I broke an ankle, which necessitated two operations. It developed an osteochondritis desiccant, which had to be removed from the ankle, and I never considered at all ever suing the city, and they shouldn't either. If they don't like playing in our parks, they shouldn't be there. Maybe we ought to put a fence around some of the ones.
Okay, thank you. Item 84A, 85A is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is unanimously approved. Forthwith on that one. And I believe that's it. All right, do we have any adjourning motions? Well, Mr. Ferraro has a couple, so I'm going to do those, if you would all rise for adjourning motions. Uh-oh, I see more of them. Anybody else?
Yes.
Mrs. Chick.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Ms. Mary Brumfield. She is the mother of Clarence Brumfield, who works for the city for general services and is the custodian in the West Valley Municipal Building. She was born in 1913 in Magnolia, Mississippi, and married her husband Truly Brumfield in June of 1935. Seven children, Truly, Junior, Clarence, Lily, Napoleon, Albert, Margaret, and Leroy. They moved to California as a family in 1952. Mary, Mom Brumfield, as she was affectionately called, was a reliable and nurturing childcare provider who always had plenty of love for everyone. Soft-spoken, kind-hearted wife, mother, and friend who was loved and cherished by all the people whose lives she touched. She had 18 grandchildren and 21 great-grandchildren whom she always loved and adored and will miss her very deeply.
Mr. Holden.
Yes, Mr. President, sad to say, this is an old dear friend of mine, Samantha Williams. We call her affectionately Si. Passed away just on March 15. She has been active in the district. She lived in the Fairfax area for many years. She was also very active in Oasis Christian Center. She retired from the L.A. Unified School District after 20 years of service, and I can give her age now, she was 76 years old, and her 77th birthday would have been March 17. But I met this lady when I first came to, wonderful person, when I first came to Los Angeles area in Pasadena, and the relationship has continued from that point on, and she's been just a wonderful person, and she leaves it to the children Kathleen Constance and Felix Constance, so that's with their names. Also, Ms. Rosa Mae Shelby. Ms. Shelby is the mother of Baba Budro. She was, and she passed away at the age of 97 after a long illness. Funeral service is scheduled for today at 11:00 a.m. at New Prospect Missionary Baptist Church in Fairpoint, Mississippi, where Baba grew up. So she's survived by Baba Budro, her daughter, Baba Budro, her son-in-law, and a host of friends and relatives. So I'm sure she'll be missed. She contributed, she was a schoolteacher, by the way, and she-